Okay, we'll call this in order. All councilors are present? Public comments on the floor?
I didn't anticipate mentioning this, but I see on the air under Article Five that there's a possible executive session for later on, and I know we have lack of public participation coming and things like that, but on a cool night like tonight, I don't want to go stand outside while you guys have the executive session. I was wondering, like, the school board always goes to another room, or if there was any way that we could kind of change that to where the people don't have to step outside. I think last meeting, we were out there twice. I don't know if anybody was here, but it's cool out there and it's getting colder, and if you want people to come.
So we could probably move that to the very end of the meeting?
Okay, I just thought maybe you could enter that, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Me representing the district, I, um, our last meeting, last month, our board meeting, we voted on our position on fluoride in our drinking water. I got back, can I approach the bench? So the district started adding fluoride in nineteen sixty-six. And that was at the will of the voting public. To get it to stop, it has to be the same thing, the public has to vote it out. The second package is the steps and how the verbiage is to put it on a ballot. Board, the Warren Stewart Board voted on it, and now I think the next step is for the town council to vote on it to be able to put it on a ballot. The vote has to happen ninety days before the next election, which is in March, I believe. So that should give you some time to vote on it. All we're asking for is to put it on a ballot, put it before the public, see if they still want to continue this.
I don't have that date in front of me, but is it the second Tuesday in March?
It's like the third, um, it's late, it's like the third Monday, because it's late in March.
It's after our council meeting, which is the second Tuesday, and then we usually have a special following.
I can't remember if it's in March or not. I know it's late in March.
Ninety days, you should have enough time.
Right, so by the second week of December, we'd have to have it prepared for...
Whether yet, when you want to put it on a ballot, and there has to be a a public meeting, at least ten days before the vote happens.
Now, this public meeting, who would, would you be giving the information to the public and answering the questions?
I would be here, yes.
Or would you have an expert coming in?
I can, I have a gentleman I've been working with, um, down, he was a, he's retired superintendent for Kent Month Court. They went through this process back in twenty sixteen, I believe. He's got a lot of knowledge, and he's more than willing to, um, I don't know if I can get him up here, do you guys have the ability for Zoom or for a conference call or something like that, or?
If we did this meeting with the Rex Center, I believe, there would be...
Yeah, we should probably have it at the Rex Center, it's going to be a town...
Yeah, it could be a town meeting.
You said he'd be willing to come in on a Zoom meeting or a conference call?
So there are three steps, the council needs to vote to put it on the ballot.
Yes.
And then there needs to be a public hearing for the town.
At least ten days before the vote happens, yes.
And then a public vote, which can happen on our regular voting in March, that would be the right time, on the ballot.
On the ballot, yes.
Let's see, right, this should go on our agenda for next month for us to follow.
So this is all the information you have on it, right here?
Yes, I, I, I do have some other information on why I feel it shouldn't be added, but I'm just here to get it on the ballot, to put it before the citizens.
Okay.
Do you, do you feel you have any opinions that we should know before, I know we and I have already talked, that's why I'm asking directly, that of your personal opinions that would possibly give us the an educated decision, rather than just say, oh, we put it before the town, not know anything about it?
Yeah.
Don't want to put you on the spot, Josh, but we and I have talked about this quite a bit.
We control the dosage down at the plant, I have a certain range I have to keep it in, point seven to one point two milligrams per liter. That's the guidelines I have to, but I have no control of it after it leaves the plant. Say if you have an adult, two hundred pounds, that drinks two glasses of water a day versus a kid that's fifty or sixty pounds, that drinks eight or ten glasses of water a day. Obviously, the kid's getting more than the adult. Fluoride's meant to be a topical, brush it on. When you brush your teeth, you spit it out, you don't swallow the toothpaste. You ever look at the back of a tube of toothpaste that actually says that more is swallowed than what's intended for use, you gotta call Poison Control. Same thing with a fluoride rinse, you drink a bottle of fluoride rinse, you gotta call Poison Control. It's meant to be brushed on. I talked to Joel at the school, and they have a dentist that comes in twice a year and brushes on a fluoride paste, I guess. But that's totally up to the parents, I believe, parents can refuse it for their kids. A pea-sized amount of toothpaste is all you need to treat your, treat your teeth. That same amount is in about two glass, eight ounce glasses of water. And you're recommended to drink eight, six to eight glasses of water a day. So if you, according to their regulations, if you drink the required amount of water, or you're supposed to six or eight glasses, you'd have to call Poison Control three times. Yeah, I mean, if anybody ever wanted to see the fluoride, how we put it in, what the bags look like, I'd be more than willing to bring anybody in. I have a pile of more information down to the, down to the water plant, but I'm just here to get it on a ballot, to put it before the people, and see if they want to continue with it. I think there's enough information out there, you can get on Google, or fluoride public drinking water, State of Maine website. They have a list of pros and cons, and I think you'll find there's a lot more cons than there is pros, the list is longer.
Yes, we'll, um, we'll make, we'll put it on next month's agenda to make a vote on that.
Yep.
And then basically...
Should we put them to me or answer questions if there's?
Yeah, probably wouldn't hurt.
No problem.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yep.
Anybody else? Seeing over their comments, we'll go to item approved, approved minutes from September tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Make a motion approved minutes from the September tenth meeting.
I'll check that. Any discussion? All in favor? I didn't think you missed any news. Next item approved, five hundred and four pleasure warrants, thirty-six D through thirty-nine P.
Make a motion to approve the warrant thirty-six D through thirty-nineteen.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the warrant? All in favor?
Need some of the one? I just have a little one that I'm going to use black. Okay, get the job wrong. There we go.
All right, I'm good ahead of myself, I'd like to welcome Kevin to term town manager position. He's graciously offered to help us out until we can find a full-time place.
I'll reserve my remarks at my manager's report.
Uh, next item is approved quick claim deed.
We have, we have four, we have three regulars and one corrected. We only had one at the time when we did the agenda, but three more came in and were ready to have it signed off.
Do you want to vote on them as individuals?
We should.
Okay. Trying to remember, when we do those motions, do we do the property is?
We use names and this is properties.
So it'd be, uh, we'll...
That's what I think. So... That's what I, that's what I think it is, too. All right, so I make a motion that we approve the quick claim deed, quick claim deed for map forty-four, lot one thirty-six B. And map dates April one twenty, two twenty twenty. That's about what it says.
Do you have a look at it for...
These are properties that taxes are coming on that were previously in pairs?
Right, yeah.
You like it when they're...
And they're all paid out in full?
Yep.
Oh, these refer back to...
Back to taxes.
Okay. Any discussion, reverse them, all in favor?
I make a motion that we approve the quick claim deed for map forty-four, lot one thirty-seven, with map date to April first, twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
Turn it over and tell us your name. I don't either, but that's... There you go.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion that we approve the quick claim deed on map forty-four, lot one thirty-eight, with map date of April one, twenty twenty.
Second that.
Did I say that?
Yes. You did.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion that we approve the corrected quick claim deed from book six five nine two, page sixty-one. Map thirteen, lot twenty-three, with the map date being April one, twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
Kevin, do you know what it's corrected for?
There was a missing signature.
Okay.
It's a war, sorry.
You know, the correction was a signature, you're saying, or?
I'm missing signature.
Oh.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
You're tired too, aren't you?
One day.
Yeah. That's all right, we got to our hotel last night, and guess who was across the hall? One of the academy friends, we were right across the hall. So we all checked in at the same time.
Yeah, but his brother is randomly in Maine.
Yeah, they're all, it's horrible.
We were with the kid in Arno last year, what year was that? Well, neither sitting next to us.
Of course, boy, I was across the hall last night.
Okay, next item is to add our new term town manager, uh, remove our former term town manager, all banking information. She has been removed, uh, they emailed the bank.
Okay. So, uh... And she'll... And we want to remind you, though, um, that you get a remove also from the, uh, TAN tax anticipation notes, because that's a liability, and I think she did sign on that one. Oh, she's on the signature card for that one. So we might need to make sure, we'll double back to check with the bank if that's done, but the question you really need to kind of ask yourselves here tonight is, um, not knowing the certainty of when and how long I'm here, whether or not you'd want to put me on, because you do already have TAN on for those, uh, accounts as treasurer. But another option would be, you could actually have a council member on signature, depending on how long it takes you to fulfill the manager position. So we do have options. What I'm saying is you don't have to put me on, because the credit cards are already, um, issued by the department heads, and the treasurer has full seventy-two thirty authority now on all, on the accounts. I'm doing the checks and balances as well, and approving what she's doing. So technically, theoretically, everything in terms of your normal business conduct or your financials is getting done now. But if you thought you were going to be longer than anticipated to fulfill this, this law, you'd either want to have me on it and/or a council member, because there's nothing preventing having a council member on signature, or just for checks and balances, because you have somebody from administration that is on it, and then there's somebody who are, is part of the approval of all the warrants, so. Either way, you can do it, so it's not really your preference on how you want to do it. And if you decide, let's take that over and wait till next month to make that decision, you can be exact that it's not going to impact your other, your finances.
I'm just wondering, it's going to be easier for a council member, just because you don't have to turn around and do it again when, so...
That, that's a pro for thinking that was...
Like the lodge, I'm one, I don't have any access to it, but I'm a signature guy for the lodge, in case something happens to the other guys.
Yeah. I'm not trying to just turn it to say that I'm not going to do it, but I know that this last turnaround...
You would say for calling the bank three or four times, you don't put one person on until we find.
Right, because I think it takes them two to three weeks for things to kind of work through.
And then turn around and do it again.
Right. Especially not going, I mean, we could have somebody next week, or it might take two months, so...
If you do the council side, then you're kind of covered until that time.
Which you got permanent wise.
That's what I'm making jokes on.
I'm already, I'm already, I'm going to meet tomorrow with them, I don't think they'll confuse you. I didn't ask for you this stuff.
Well, we go with March, hopefully we'll have a manager by then, but you and I, both our terms are upcoming up. So, but if we put one of us on there and then we're out, then you gotta do it again, so. Why don't we take the two newest, one of the two newest members, be either you or Cherry.
I like his way of thinking.
Just saying, you know, I mean, I mean, I mean, it's okay, and it's better than that.
You know I'm...
I think our goal would be to keep it as painless as possible for whoever it is. But it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a safety case, it's a safety case, you know? If TAN gets run over on our way home from work, and she's out of work, you're covered. You can get things done until that time as you get, when that person on there, you know, on the, on the...
I have a question, and it's just, it's just for learning stuff. If we didn't have an interim, thank you for stepping in that seat, would we still go on that, down that same route?
They highly recommend that you get somebody to oversee, but...
But if you're in a pinch?
Chairperson or council member can...
Right.
Do the duties.
Yeah, oversee.
So we just started going to classes, and we've got a lot to learn, and that's the only reason why I asked that, just, I mean, nothing against you, just, you know, we didn't know if, uh...
Right.
But I think we should be one of the two, the newbies.
I, I've got a year and a half left, if they didn't want to do it, and they're pointing towards me, I would do it.
Well, it's probably not good that he has a chair, because he's already signing off on all the warrants.
That's true.
And he has to do that every week, so it'd be better for the checks and balances, I'd just have a third person now, so.
Do you want it, or do you want me to take it? No, I'm, I'm fine with somebody, if somebody else, if they want to take it, I'm fine with that.
You're the assistant chair, so...
I am the assistant chair.
There you go. All right, so we make a motion, and we have Cherry add it to the, uh, checks and balances and for the signature.
Well, we'll just say all banking information will include, um, liability notes and, uh, asset notes, because you've got a cemetery note with six savings at the CD, and you've got the TAN, the accounting for the tax or anticipation, so, yeah.
That's my motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Can you share it?
Cherry. Okay, so we will move the old business item to the end of the meeting, um, those are the two manager reports.
Okay, thank you very much. You might have to get it here. Thank you for your vote confidence to bring me on board, I wasn't anticipating, I thought I might get another couple weeks of motorbike riding in, but since it's getting colder, I'm okay. But I do appreciate the opportunity to come and fill in, until that time it is you're ready to find a permanent, uh, town manager. What I have done is I attempted to try to find where a lot of things that may have either fallen through the cracks, or just didn't get paid attention to, or, uh, was left sort of on the table with all the transitions that were going on. And this is kind of a list of things, and I'm going to just give you an update of kind of where I am and where we'll move forward to making sure we work on that checklist to get these things accomplished. Uh, the first one is the, um, Ron Lawyer and Company Audit Firm. Uh, we did sign a contract, uh, to have them come to do next year's audit, so that is taken care of. And that was, I think, a few old business and a couple of minutes back, so we're all set for an audit company to do the audit. The sale of equipment that the, uh, shop folks have, uh, that was, uh, put together by Stacy that went into the paper, and it was, I think, posted two weeks ago, maybe, in the Star Herald, and it's on the website. And so we are accepting the bids, and the bid date for opening is supposed to be October sixteenth. So that would happen at two o'clock in the afternoon, I think, it's open if anybody wants to be here for the bids. I'm not sure what your thought process was, because your advertising did say, um, all bids received, um, there's no guarantee that anything will actually be accepted for actual...
Right, break or refuse.
Right, to refuse, so, um, I'm going to leave that to you guys to figure out how you're going to make the decisions on the bids. Uh, you're just going to open them, and I didn't know whether or not you were going to actually do a separate meeting, or...
Was there a closing date on those bids, too?
Uh, yeah, um, it must have been before the sixteenth, because that is the posted date for it opening. Just opening the bid.
Oh, so opening...
So we'll have bids in hand, people can see you with the bids, but you don't have to make the decision right then and there, but we'll have to determine whether you're going to wait till next month's meeting, and that's an agenda item to determine if you want to accept, reject, or negotiate, I guess, whatever on, on the balance.
So in the past, when we sold, um, basically did this same thing, typically the, it was sealed bid, and the council would seal bids at noon. And we would determine if we would accept that bid or not.
Uh, okay, well, I'm not sure that's how that was publicized.
I guess that's how I imagined.
That's how I thought it was going to work, and I didn't know how it was publicized.
Yeah, I don't have any public fiction in front of me, so I don't know exactly what it said, but I know she told me it was the bid, bid opening was on two o'clock, because that's what it said in the half past, two o'clock on the sixteenth.
Should we have a special two o'clock on the sixteenth and do a bid opening?
I can't make it to that.
I have a hard guy, too.
Do we need that? Just one statement.
True.
Well, one option, one option is you do the bid opening on the sixteenth, you get all the bids opened, and you thank everyone who has, that's in attendance, and then you bring them to the, the next meeting, and you vote to whom, and then you determine, you know, what you want to do, to dispose or not dispose.
The next meeting would be October twelfth, November.
Right. Um, uh, most of the equipment, from remembering off the list, is maybe the bulldozer's own, or still like the active inventory, they're just, yeah, not really, not being used, so that's why I've made the list of these all, so, another thing, I don't think it's going to preclude you from getting work done if, if you wait until probably, so, I don't know if you need to, any work into that.
Yeah, I guess we, we had a just communication somewhere, that's how, we've always, we have, we have time to open, if you're here, but...
How about, I make a motion that we look at the bids at our next regular meeting.
Sure.
And maybe we can still do the sixteenth.
You can open them up, yes?
Yeah, yeah, and then people know that you have received them, and that you will thank them under advisement.
Any more discussion on that, all in favor?
Okay, next item, uh, this is just an update item for the council, uh, the ARPA grant, which was the subdivision review study for the parcel land down on Station Hill, potentially do some sort of, uh, housing subdivision project, we have the package in hand, uh, I've reached out to Maggie Pierce, who was formerly the code enforcement officer, since, uh, the newly hired, uh, CEO, uh, Cheeksir hasn't received his CEO training, we will, we'll, we'll, uh, coordinate a contract, an individual contract with Maggie for whatever estimated hours we think it will take her to review the package, and then she will need to attend the planning board, and she has already reached out to Billy to see about a planning board meeting, because that whole package needs to be brought to the planning board, they have to hear what a code enforcement person would say about it, um, and the idea is those two things together will help us basically close out that grant, because we're right near the end of the grant for what they would consider as phase one of that grant, um, and our goal is to try to get that done here before the end of the month, so hopefully if we get a date from Billy, we'll, uh, get that date scheduled, we'll post it seven days advance, and then they'll have a planning board, and, um, Billy can decide to return to Maggie, if they want the, uh, site developer that did plan to have presence here, or if Karen, who was the grant administrator for us, would need to be in attendance, she probably would come anyway, but bottom line is, we're on the process to get that taken care of here the next three weeks, okay, any questions on that one?
Can we pay for Maggie's other big grants for...
No, unfortunately I asked that question, but it's going to be an hourly rate, so it's four hours of her time, and I don't think it would be too expensive to just have her here to do the review, and, because we'll get the package to her, she'll review it, and then she'll be prepared to present what her concerns are as a, for the senior level person. Um, just for your knowledge also, uh, I've, uh, gotten paperwork from the DOT, in case you may not know, uh, we are geared for next year, in twenty twenty-five, probably in the springtime, DOT is going to do paving from our stoplight, uh, Route eleven and two twenty-seven, all the way up Station Hill, out, uh, not Station Hill, Exchange Street, all the way out to, uh, just shy of six miles.
Oh, okay.
So that paving is scheduled, uh, I don't know if they've actually let loose yet the actual contract of who's going to do the paving, but it's in the process, and the reason they notified us is all of their little requirements for any municipal properties that are on that path, you know, you've got to have your elevations correct, and the slopes and slopes and all that, so I've given it to Stacy to look at, because we've got the library, the entrance to the library, and the red center, uh, area, we've got the water tower for water steward, and I don't know, is there anything else publicly owned to about six miles out?
Yes, you've got the, where the garden field, uh, the Sheridan Road is, you've got the Page Road, Tomlin Hill, and Frenchville.
You think that's within that six mile?
Probably. Four miles to the Page Road.
Okay, so we have that, that would be...
And then you're going another two miles, that six miles is in the middle of Frenchville, I don't know what else, but there may be some town-owned right-of-ways.
Right.
Go to access property that the town owns.
Right.
Snowmobile trails, that kind of thing.
So I've given it to Stacy to try to identify what he thinks we're going to need to do, because we have to basically report back to them, yeah, we know that we're going to have to deal with it, and we'll start putting all this together, those things, and make sure that we're in compliance with whatever they're saying we got to do in order for them to put that paving in, so hopefully the road's not in too bad shape going on, too much, so, I don't know if you have maintenance funds, if you have to do any kind of thinking on that, at least you now know this come, may come up that we might find that we have some things we've got to do in order for them to...
True.
Yeah, there shouldn't be too much, I would think, so, okay, so that's, uh, notification there, uh, now I'm really going back into some older, uh, council meetings, but I just want you to know they're on my checklist of tasks that need to be attended to, uh, the question on whether to tear down and/or replace the fencing down at the dropping park, uh, there hasn't ever been any quotes or, uh, data done on that that I'm aware of, so I will ensure that I'll get with somebody to determine if we want to go get some quotes, and I don't know if there's any statutory or any kind of municipal, um, issue with whether the fence needs to stay up, and we have to have a fence, or whether it can just be torn down and we do not replace the fence.
We, we talked...
Do you have that discussion?
We did, and we talked about the fact that with the playground there, we were hoping to have a fence.
Okay.
Because we thought it would be safer, especially for kids, and it isn't even just a playground now, the, the Meligans have a lot of young kids up there on their motorcycles and stuff like that too, but...
So we're, we'd be looking to get a quote from where it begins now, at, on just, you know, this side of the playground area, all the way down to the end, because that whole area is being utilized, so we'd want to see, uh, quotes for either repair, and/or if it's unreparable, replacement. Yeah, okay, and so I'll be, that's on my checklist to go get some information on that. Um, and then the second thing, uh, was, um, a, uh, council item regarding conducting, uh, annual reviews for personnel, so, uh, that will be on my checklist, uh, I have talked, uh, to a couple of people, uh, on the staff, and we'll look at that in terms of, um, if there needs to be something a little more robust than there currently is, we'll look at the process, in fact, Dr. Cheeksir, um, he, I think, has, uh, a, uh, company that does the law enforcement, they have a, basically a template process that they use across the whole state of Maine for, um, this exact very thing, safety slash HR policy implementation for basically chief of police to be able to oversee review systems and disciplinary processes for law enforcement, and I said, and today, you know what, um, my guess is probably that's got a seventy or eighty percent, if you decide that that's something that's you would be interested in for the chief of police side, or for the police department, that template probably could be utilized across all departments, you just change fire department, analyst selection, administration, whatever, and now you have a system that talks about annual review process, uh, department heads, what their supervisory responsibilities are to do those reviews, and what the disciplinary process will be, so that any new hires, when they bring them on board, you give them here's, here's the situation. This is the consistency, your expectation is, you know, you do your job after a six month period, there's maybe a probationary, uh, uh, six month review, and then there's an annual review thereafter for every year that you're an employee, even though you're considered a natural employer, an employee, uh, but it's a process that you can get them to sign off when they're just signing on as a brand new person in orientation, and then...
We haven't had this replaced before?
I, I haven't dug in deep enough to know how far that process gives, so all I know is, you guys recognize that there could be some constructive work that needs to be done there, so it's on my checklist to start looking into that area. Okay, uh, and then the next one was the estimates, the, uh, question about whether or not to repair the tennis courts, and to fix the cracks, and hot talk, and to get estimates, Sherry asked a motion to get the, uh, that looked at, and so while we're late in the season, uh, we can still work at towards getting some quotes, but it might be that it would be a sprint project, if we decided that you were going to do it.
And before you look too hard, talk to Timmy Tar, because I think Timmy Tar was going to look into it, and I don't know if he did and just didn't get back to us. Wasn't Timmy here when we were talking about that?
I don't recall, but he's got on the property.
I don't care, oh, well, the gentleman...
Timmy for something.
What, Timmy Lou?
It was his son-in-law, yes, it was his son-in-law was the one that made that comment, I thought, because he just lives right...
He, no, no, what he said was that he would mow it.
He said he would mow it, and he'd take out the trash, if we put trash cans down there, and he also said that if we came up with the crack sealer and stuff, that he would volunteer his time to provide.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's what I meant.
So, one day he's come here, that's a little bit of an expert on the surface and whether or not, what, if it's repairable, and what would cost to repair it, so that's on my checklist, and I will work on getting something going on, um, and then, uh, I think that was all I have for that, just lastly, uh, introducing myself to those that, um, you're probably the only that hadn't known me, I grew up here, I'm from Ashland, and I do appreciate you guys giving the opportunity to fill in and help you, until you guys give a permanent solution, um, and, uh, the only request that I personally had is, I really don't need for you to make any full public announcement, we do have it on the website, and I am in the interim, and people are finding out pretty well, because everybody's asking me, have you done these things, I'm like, oh, I heard you down, I've shut down office now, I said, yeah, well, I'm, you know, I'm here until they find a permanent solution, so, uh, I don't need to, I don't need to, I'm kind of paper shell, you wouldn't put it on paper. So, that, and so that was my only request, is, like I said, um, I'm flexible, uh, based on however you guys, I want you to do a root search, I want you to find the right person for the town, and, uh, if it takes, you know, longer than what we anticipated, um, I may not, I might have to Thursday have a house in Florida because of the hurricane, so I might not be in any real rush to get down there, uh, but bottom line is, I'm at your disposal until the best time as you know longer in my services, so that's, uh, thank you for that, and that's all I have for Rend's report.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we'll do the council items, you have, you have anything?
Not tonight.
Okay.
Oh, I'm good.
I just wanted to say that I have seen a, uh, decrease in speed in the last two weeks up along, uh, the Prescal Road, past my shop in both directions, so whatever we're doing right now is working.
I think a lot that has to do with the lights that we have now.
The lights that we have, and there's, they're, they are watching it closer, and I think, I think that it's making an impact.
They are stopping a lot of people on there.
I don't think they're great, a lot of tickets though, I think...
Well, first, first warning, second time here.
They should move a little farther up the street at my shop, about two o'clock, man, they're going to watch.
Oh, I know, but I've noticed in front of my shop, the trucks are not hitting the jingrings by the, uh, the school anymore, so...
Well, that's, that's better than the negative.
I, I think whatever they're doing is working. That's it.
Um, the only item, I just wanted to let you guys know that we have BLS meeting set up for Thursday evening.
I'm just bringing, just one. Here.
Yeah. So I just wanted to let you know about that, that's all I have for today. And I would, I just need a motion to, or a meeting session.
I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss personnel issue permitting state law, title one of our state section four or five dash six eight.
I'll take that. All in favor?